Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Scioto Township Zoning Board of Appeals for July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I've called the meeting to order and asked Mr. Shields to call the order.
Here.
Here.
Shields here. Noel.
Here.
Angus.
Here.
You missed Rainey.
Rainey.
Don't worry, we'll watch out that you're doing.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes they wish to make? If not, we'll see what's motion.
Second.
Motion to approve as stated the agenda by Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. Angus. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shields, yes. Noel.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
All right, the agenda has been adopted. The next item on the agenda is communications and or correspondence. I don't think I have any. We did, the applicant did submit something additional which we all have. But other than that, does anybody have any correspondence or communication? No. All right, well then, moving in onto the next item on the agenda is the swearing in. Those people who won the test fine here today. If not, will have to make it up. I'll make it. For those people who will be test fine today on any of the matters, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. The next item on the agenda are public hearings. There are no public hearings scheduled for today. So we move on to the next item of the agenda, which is old business. And that is variance number two, four, zero, zero, four. See, so far in Shalina, in that square one, six eighty-five South Z Road, H dash oh, eight, dash, two, seven, dash, three, zero, zero, dash, zero, one, one, to allow construction of an accessory structure with a side yard thirteen-foot setback instead of the required thirty-foot side yard setback pursuant to section thirty-six, dash, seven, five schedule of regulations. I note that Mr. Zafar and Mr. Clark are here. Could both of you come up to the front table here, please? And I'll note for the record again that Mr. Zafar has submitted another sketch of the premises including what I assume to be the marking of where the vegetation or trees are in green. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. This is a continuation of the hearings which were held twice before. This is the third time for requesting a proposed garage, God bless you, within the side yard setback. Is Mr. Luan in the audience?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, Miss Luan, if you have anything to add as we go along, please feel free.
Yeah, I don't have anything new to add, except I think you mentioned that there's a new drawing. And it's much clearer than the previous drawing showing some limitations to the location of, you know, where a garage could go, particularly the front yard area. There's a number of existing trees out there that are now clearly shown. And behind the home, there's, there's very limited. It starts to get to be pretty tight with, when you start to, you know, try to put the, what would be a garage and a driveway between some existing trees off the back of the home and the septic field that's a little further to the east. But this is, you know, we asked for a little more detailed drawing. The applicant has provided it. I didn't feel there was a need for me to do another, a whole nother review on this. So I think we're kind of down to this one item and turn it back over to you guys.
Hey, great, thanks.
Could you tell us which drawing it is you're referring to? Is it this one?
One in green is the, it's marked in green. It's, actually, I have two pages worth. It may be in a separate part of your binder because it wasn't mine. There's some from last month as well. But in any event, if you'd like to have mine, I can show you.
That's okay. You got to, so I'll just, thank you.
So Mr. Zafar, or Mr. Clark, whoever is going to be speaking, or both, feel free. What would you like to add? And we can repeat things from prior meetings, it's not a problem. We do have new people here. And we have a full complement of the ZBA. So if you'd like to explain your, your case to us, please go ahead and do so.
That'll be good. So for the members who are not familiar with this one, I'll just do a very quick, a brief rundown as to where this is coming from. And so this new structure is as a result of the current garage being remodeled to accommodate another room and a bathroom. And so the space that we used to have for things like bicycles and lawnmower and things of that nature have been utilized by a bedroom and a bathroom. And so we needed a place to accommodate for the things that, that we need on a day-to-day basis that are meant for the garage. And so the proposed garage is going to be positioned at the end of the driveway, which is the most logical place, in my opinion, having the fact that, you know, the driveway ends and the garage starts. And we're trying to build it to match the house with the siding and the windows and the appearance and the type of roof and all that. So putting it elsewhere would not only be impractical in terms of driving to it, but there are, as you can see, quite a bit of limitations. And so the goal is to make it kind of look like extension of the, of the house and not make it an eyesore and put it in the middle of a yard, which is, you know, both my wife and I were very fond of, you know, our property and I think it'll just be an eyesore elsewhere. And if it is not approved for this particular location, we'll just have to simply drop the whole plan because I cannot possibly imagine putting it elsewhere on my property. It is the most logical place. If you visit and you take a look at it, I think it's quite obvious that that is the most ideal place. And I know this is not board members concerned. I have made a rookie mistake of making some financial commitments. I'm really hoping that this gets approved before I get a huge setback and just a lesson learned that will leave a margin. So I'm hoping for leniency and hoping that you guys understand as to where I'm coming from and hope we end on a good note for me.
If I could add just a little bit.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. The garage and this location of the property, but a wooded area that is owned by Polo Fields. I did try, I tried to get Polo Fields involved and it was very difficult. They've got new owners, I believe. So anyway, it's not going to impose on anybody. You can't see it even from the driveway of Polo Fields. It's just wooded and it's an area that will never be built on. It's almost impossible. It's not a buildable space for if somebody moved in and said, oh, I want to take that and I'm going to build a house right there. At that point, right, it could be an imposing situation. In this situation, it's never going to be. And, you know, we, we like to preserve, you know, or talk about side yard setbacks. We'd like to preserve the fact that we don't want to infringe upon other properties that would be buildable. And in this case, like I said, it's not going to be buildable. It's going to be a standalone. We had the neighbor that was to the south here last, at the last meeting. And it's not, okay, yes, you're right.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I hate to interrupt you, but just so everyone knows, the neighbors who were here last time were Mr. and Mrs. Dalpra, D A L P R A, who lived at seven twenty-seven South Z and had no objection to the project. Correct? Am I correct, Mr. Clark?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, and I apologize for interrupting. Please continue.
That, that's my whole point is, again, the, the only property that could possibly care would be the client that, or the homeowners that were to the south. And they had no objections, zero objections. It's going to be confined, it's going to look good. It's not going to be out in the middle of the front yard looking like an eyesore. We've done everything we can to preserve the, the use of the property so that it doesn't cause any detriment.
Okay. Generally speaking, the procedure for the original public hearing, I guess we should still follow here today. And essentially, that includes the applicant making the presentation. And any persons who wish to speak in support of the petitioner have an opportunity. We'll give that just a moment. And then persons who would oppose it would also be allowed to speak. During which time, any of the board members may ask questions or clarifications, after which time the board will deliberate and discuss options available to us. And so I guess I'll ask at this point, unless you guys have anything further to say. Okay, I'll ask whether there's anybody either here in the audience or on Zoom who wish to speak in favor of this proposal, proposed variance. Let us know. Anybody with a raised hand on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Moving along, is there anybody who is in the audience or who is on Zoom who wish to speak against this variance or to oppose the variance? Please let us know or raise your hand on Zoom so we can recognize you. But there are no hands raised on Zoom, correct?
Correct.
Are, do any of the board members have additional questions? We, this is our third round, so to speak.
Why wasn't it decided on previously?
I wasn't here for the first meeting. What I've told, what I have been told from the minutes, they wanted to have some, and Bob, you were, Mr. Walsh was here.
Yes, it's charity.
And of course, Mr. Angus was here. From the minutes, it appeared they wanted, the board wanted some clarifications on the drawings.
We were looking for information, particularly on mature trees on the property that might be in place and have to be removed should the proposed garage be relocated from its current site. We were also looking for information on the septic field just to make sure that any placement of the garage didn't impinge on the septic system of the house. Like those were the two big items we were looking for.
And I was here for the second meeting, dealing with this variance. But there was no additional information which contained specifics of the locations of the mature trees or anything else, even the location of the septic field. And we couldn't see clearly from the handwriting on the original mortgage survey, which was used. So the applicant was asked to provide additional information for this meeting. And that's where we get the draw, the two pages of drawings with the green in color showing flower vegetable beds. And as a clarification today for Mr. Zafar of the trees and including the elevation of the very front. So that's the reason why we, why I was put over to today. So, that being said, do any of the board members have any other questions of the applicant at this point?
Yes, I'll ask a question. You said if this isn't approved, you'd walk away. In looking at the drawing and trying to envision a thirty-foot setback, a garage that met the setback and was close to the end of the driveway would probably require the removal of the one evergreen tree that was there. And again, I was at the property in May, there was some wood stacked up against it. And it would also, the picture, the drawing provided shows it in line with the dimensions of the house. It would be then somewhat skewed against the visual line of the house. Has, I guess my question is, that's not a possibility for you?
Yeah, so in order to maintain that thirty-foot required, we would not have to only move it further behind, but more towards the, the, the south side of, of the house, which would then become an eyesore when you do want to sit in the back.
The south side of the house?
No, the south side of the property. If, if he, if he was to move to the backyard and move it over so it gets thirty, it'd be in the vision of his windows, doors, everything, I mean.
Right, but it wouldn't be the south side of the, of the house.
No, the property.
Yeah.
Be moving south.
So I'm sorry, I, I used the wrong, wrong picture, so.
And I'm just asking, I, I didn't mean to criticize, I wanted a clarification because I assumed that to be the case.
Yeah, we'd be scooching it over a little bit to the south direction. And, and then it would really become a, an eyesore when, when you do step out into the backyard, you know, for, for ourselves or for a future homeowner, it would not be something desirable.
I, I should also mention at this point, and we're, we're skewing the procedure a little bit, but because of the nature of the three hearings we're having here. Last time, we did have disclosures of visiting the property and discussing with Mr. Zafar, including mine, my discussions, which we went over last time. Is there anybody else, any other members of the board who since the, the last meeting has, have visited the property or, and/or spoken with Mr. Zafar? Mr. Angus, no?
No, but I did go by, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Walsh?
That's my original visit, thank you.
All right, I, I, I met with Mr. Zafar before the last meeting and the discussions are, that we had verified that Mr. Zafar on the record. Mr. Shields?
I've driven by there several times and today I drove around Polo Fields to see if there are any similarly shaped size.
But did you have any discussions?
No, I had no discussions.
Ms. Noel?
I've driven by, but I didn't walk the property and I have had no discussions with it.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions for the applicant at this point?
The proposed driveway for the new garage would be coming from the existing.
The existing driveway.
Oh, that'd be nice, it would have been on the drawing.
Well, it sort of is.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, it's actually.
All right, yeah, I'm, I was looking at it coming from the other way, no wonder, okay. In terms of the field itself or with the trees, it could be used as a trail potentially at some point through the woods.
Oh, can you repeat it?
So to access his property, it'd be a trail? No, but it would be something that would have a visual of, of the property. So they're walking by and there was a trail that was created, so we're assuming at this point. Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm saying that's a potential. When you say no way. But Polo Fields is never, I mean, we've sent emails, we get no responses to, they disagree. Or, I mean, I know the letters were sent there, right? I mean, they're within the three hundred feet.
They, they were given notice.
Yeah, yeah, so they could rebut if they wanted to.
Yes, or they might not have, because as you know from your other experience with CBAs throughout the Washtenaw County area, Mr. Clark, there are a lot of times people do not come to the meetings assuming that they, the setbacks will be enforced.
Okay, cool. That's another assumption.
It is, it's an assumption, I guess it's from our experience, which may not
Send out the letters, we give them the opportunity.
I'm sorry, when I'm finished, you can talk and you can talk now, go ahead.
I said that that's why the letters are sent out, to give them the opportunity to say yea or nay.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move along to the board discussion. Lady and gentlemen, your thoughts?
Why don't you start with the people, what you're just talking about?
Mr. Walsh, you've been here before.
I'm two minds on this. I consider this, the applicant had a garage. We've talked about particularly a parcel this size, that a two-car garage is a substantial property, right? But there was a garage, the applicant repurposed it. So essentially, what we're talking about is an outbuilding. We've had outbuildings before come to us and we've said that an outbuilding is not a substantial property, right? And we've denied variances, looking for setback relief. We've also considered obstacles and other things that we have occasionally given relief. I guess where I'm of two minds of this is, I like to be consistent. Since I've been on the ZBA, we've been fairly consistent about saying no to this. We honor the setbacks, whether it's buildable or not. We've had a few that haven't been, that have common ground that would never be built on. We've still said no. On the other hand, we've also, when it comes to removing mature trees, we've given relief. So I, I could be swayed by others, I'd probably be leaning towards denying, to be honest. But if someone's got a firm belief one way or the other, I, I could be swayed.
Mr. Shields, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I do. I have driven by there several times. I have written both approve and deny motions, struggled mightily over them. And every time I come back to this question about does the reason for the variance is based on result from the actions of the applicant? And I get stuck there. I just can't get around that and we, we stand by that. And then I went, I keep all the motions for two, three years on that. We have, I don't, I couldn't find one that we have approved that involved the actions of the owner. So I, I feel bad about it, but that's where I stand.
Yeah, most, most of the ones, most of the variances we've dealt with since I've been on the, my second term on the board, usually I talk about the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions which apply to that property, but don't generally apply to other properties in the same district. And you have a lot of discussion about this. And I guess I understand this is as far as contention that the property is a little bit unique because the house is on an angle. I understand that, but and I understand the, the trees there in the back probably one of which, within their substantial trees, would have to be removed to have it meet the, the setback. If this building was going to go back there, and I might add, it's going to also have to extend the driveway. And the other items that were charged with evaluating a requested variance all are that it's necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone vicinity. And Mr. Walsh, correct, we generally agree that a garage is, that does meet that general idea of a, of a substantial property right by itself. And I don't see anything that would be materially detrimental to the public welfare for this requested variance, nor do I see any adverse effect on the master plan. But like Mr. Shields, I am stuck on the exceptional circumstances which do not result from the actions of the applicant. I think if we're going to be consistent, we have to evaluate that. And in this case, I agree with Mr. Walsh and Mr. Shields to, I'll add, to a certain extent, that this entire situation comes up because of the desire of the applicant to have, to turn the garage into a living quarters, which is fine by itself. But that's what costs the, 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 the whole analysis of the request for variance. And I'm stuck with Mr. Shields on that. Ms. Noel?
Well, I hear what all of you are saying. I, you know, it is difficult. This is a gray area. I guess I would lean toward granting the variance. I, the property is somewhat unique with the septic fields, the Is somewhat unique with the septic fields, the trees, the mature trees. And. If you're going to use the argument that you used about a substantial property right. That he should have the property right to. Have the option of having a garage. Even though, yes, I hear what you're saying about it being his choice to build a different. Yeah, I know.
So how?
Understand that.
How do we address that?
Well, we have the mature trees on the property.
I'm just.
And we have, nobody's opposing it, no neighbor is opposing it. Um, they did receive notice. And we know that oftentimes people do come and express concerns about. A, a proposed variance, when they're concerned, nobody has expressed concerns. The location is close to the, uh, Polo Fields area where. There isn't going to be any construction, correct?
I, I think it's pretty safe to say.
What did you, go ahead, Doug?
I think that's pretty safe to say that it would be very unlikely that that property would ever be developed north of them. And could I, um, could I add something?
Yes.
Um, so. I understand the. Um, the consternation with the idea of, uh, self-created hardship. And while the applicant has mentioned that they've kind of put themselves in a box. That's really, in my opinion, that's really not what self-created hardship means. Um, the self-created hardship is when the applicant has done something. On the property itself, like the position of a building. Or they took a lot split that didn't give them enough area to expand on one side or the other, or something like that. So while the applicant has mentioned that they occupied their garage. And converted to living space. If he never said that. We'd just be thinking this is a garage with some issues. So I, I just, I don't think the fact that he converted a garage to living space. Is the same as someone who has done something physical to the, to a structure or. A lot line or something like that, that's now hurt them, in fact. The applicant didn't even have to say that they converted this to living space, they could have just said they wanted an additional accessory structure. And then, and then we wouldn't be looking at any of these things. So.
Not to argue with you, not to argue with you, Ms. Luan, but. If the applicant did not mention anything about the existing attached garage. And is asking for something which he is now claiming, would be claiming a substantial property right. Then I would be looking at that from the point of view of a substantial property right, and I don't think it would meet, meet the requirement.
Yeah. Well, I think that would be. You know, I would agree with that, uh, assessment, but I don't. Because then he'd be looking at a second accessory structure, if that's kind of what you're saying. Um. But I, I, I didn't even, you know, when, in my thoughts and my analysis of this, just because they converted. The old garage into living space doesn't have any. That, to me, that doesn't impact, I don't, I don't see that as a, as an unnecessary, I don't see that as a self-created hardship. I, 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 I see them wanting to build an accessory structure. And I think there are, now that the drawing is clearer. I think there are. Aspects to this request that are unique. To other requests of someone requesting an accessory structure. Within the township. Namely, the Polo Fields little extra waste property to the north that would, I don't know how it would ever be developed, it's too small. And then the, um, the fact that there are trees in the front yard, there's trees or septic prop, there's septic field, I think there's, in my opinion. Um, I think there's enough. Uh, on this site to, uh, consider that the variance, so that, that's just. I, that's how I'm, I'm looking at it, don't, don't mean to insert myself too much into your thinking there, but.
Don't forget you don't have a vote, that's true.
So anyway, that, that's just, that's just my thoughts, and I just wanted to clarify, with my idea of, of, uh, of, um, self-created hardship. To me, it's more of a physical, they did something in the past that is now. Required a variance, and we're not supposed to grant variances for that. Um. I, you know, because they occupied a part of the inside of the building that, to a different use, I don't. I don't, I, well, I, I, I guess you could argue, but I, I don't see it that way, so that, that's my thought.
That's helpful for me.
Mr. Safari, you have your hand raised, we're really in deliberations now, but I tell you what, well, well. Because we, the procedure's gotten kind of hacked up a little bit over the three times it's been up, why don't you go ahead and say what you want to say?
Um. It, it may not have a whole lot of bearing on the situation, uh, the decision of, uh, utilizing some of that garage was not. In a whim that, hey, let's just increase the square footage of the house and, you know. Make use of it for whatever pleasure, uh, it, it, it. Technically, like I said, may not have any bearing, um, but, uh. We have an elderly, uh, my mother-in-law, who's in her eighties, that we're trying to convince to not be on her own and. Support her and, um. This house compared to where we moved from is a much smaller house and. The, all the rooms are occupied, there were two boys and, and us, uh, limited number of bathrooms. And so we felt really necessary that in order to accommodate, uh, for her, that we would need to take up that space, so it was not something. Hey, let's take up all the space in the garage and then we'll worry about everything else later and put another structure, but it, it came out of necessity. Technically, it may not mean anything to the board members, but that's where we, we came from as a homeowner.
I think everything is taken into consideration, I understand.
You have to understand, we're asking the questions so that we can fully evaluate and. Make sure we. Look at all sides of this, I guess. Mr. Kengas, you've been quiet.
Yeah, I'm just keep on looking at this drawing and wondering if. You had moved that proposed garage to a butt to the wooden deck, uh, right behind the house, have you looked, did you look at that?
Can you take the question, please?
Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Kengas was asking whether, uh, you could. Put the, uh, plan building, uh, adjacent to the deck. Is that correct, Mr. Kengas?
Yeah, and about right into the, uh, house. In terms of, did you measure how much that would be versus what, you know, current, current is?
Yeah, so there's a sunroom. That's existing. In the allocation, just short, just short of where you're talking about, which we're pulling down and putting in a new sunroom. That's, that's not why I'm here, the garage is being done by another contractor, but my point is, it, it would just be right.
What, what's being, I'm sorry, what's, I have a word or two, Mr. Clark, could you say, tell us what's going on?
Do you see the box that's to the south, there's, there's a deck right there, okay, that's what you're referring?
South of what?
South of the property. Okay, south of, on, on the south side of that, I mean, it is the east side of the house going south is what I believe you're asking, could we move it? To a butt of the deck that's there?
Right.
Okay, well, in that little box that you're seeing, inside that deck is a existing sunroom, it's been there for twenty-five years. And we're going to pull it down and put up something a little more desirable and something that can be used year-round. Um. To me, you'll be looking right at the garage that you're asking to move over.
And not to mention, uh. The, the mature trees that all would have to come down, not just one.
Would all come down?
Because the garage will, um, the, the, the trees will be in the, in the way.
Compromised, yes.
There's not enough space to put the garage here.
One that would be.
Oh, they all would, because, well, two of them at, at least.
Yeah, I mean.
The, the garage would have to stay four feet away from the house, that's code. So you have to be further four feet back and then move it over, you're gonna, you're gonna lose two for sure, maybe a third.
Yeah, and, and, and they're all tall and mature trees, like, right next to each other and, um. Based on, you know, what I know as a homeowner, they would all have to, there's just not enough space in there and it would be. A very sad thing to, to lose that many number of mature trees.
Oh, we chewing on it or what?
Yes, I think we are.
Yeah.
Sure, okay. Chew away.
Again. The ZBA changes. This is a new group compared to some of the ones previously, the input from Carl Hartman has also changed.
You're not suggesting you quote Spohnic or another?
No. I'm, I'm chewing and, and taking in opinions and perspectives.
Oh, okay.
And again, I'm going to get back to my personal consistency. We have the one on Walter's Way. Where the property owner tried to contact the, the owner of this little sliver that went behind a whole slew of houses. Um, couldn't, and we denied it. That chunk that was keeping him from building was part of the PUD for that subdivision, no one was ever going to build back there, we still said no. Uh, for putting an outbuilding in. We had the one, I forgot, on the street where. They were looking to extend the deck and put the covering on, the side, the setback was for a common area that wasn't going to be built. Owner, the applicant had a need for a medical reason for having the deck be covered, but that was, and I won't get into which part of the zone. But you couldn't do it on our deck that far back, we still said no. Where I'm struggling on this is. And we didn't find a way to say yes, I mean, we looked, we didn't. The only thing that I can see on this to say yes is. What's the value of the trees?
Well, we haven't really discussed the other part, the other possibility is moving the depth behind the trees. And just extend the driveway, but in a curved, well, less bend.
And we've, since I've been on the ZBA, we've had the discussions that. Clever design and aesthetics. Why we consider them, code is the code.
Uh, to add, that we've had a summer discussion about our job is not to provide solutions.
Yes.
You know, I'm wondering if, so I'm seeing this for the first time. And, you know, I see it slightly differently from all of you. Um, I understand what you're saying and I get your points. I just think that they have. Offered sufficient rationale for us to seriously consider granting variance. And we have the mature trees. No objections from nearby property owners. The fact that this is their property and. I, I don't see how granting this variance. Impacts adversely on anyone else.
Kathy, I would agree with all of that. I'm still stuck with this question.
Which one?
What is?
The question is, the reactions, the actions of the applicant. And while I heard Doug, I didn't find that persuasive.
See, I, I found what Doug said to be persuasive. And Doug and I often don't agree. Um, but I found it to be very persuasive.
What is? And I'm, I, I, I'm just asking philosophically. What is your. Opinion on the, the, why we have setbacks?
They have consistency in our zoning ordinance and to protect neighboring property so that there's. Reasonable expectation of consistency with distances. There are no neighboring properties here, though.
There are.
Well, not close to. The one area where this is going to be close to, I mean, that's a vacant. It's a vacant parcel where there will not be residential development.
Yeah, I'm doing this from memory, I think, isn't it part of the PUD, Doug? Doug, are you here?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, is what part of the PUD, sorry?
The, the, the Polo Fields property, uh, adjacent to this one, is that part of the, the PUD for the Polo's, Polo Fields?
Um, I believe so, let me check a zoning map and I'll get, I'll.
I, and I'm doing this from memory, because I think it came on.
It was in the minutes for months.
Okay.
Last month, but we should still confirm.
Yeah. And. And then to take it logically from there. Should we make a distinction between PUD and other property? Or should we, um, and should we, um. Judge. Our decisions on the fact that nobody comes here to complain?
We're not judging at base solely on that, though, that nobody came to complain, there are other factors that. One might weigh in considering the total situation, it's not just that nobody came to complain.
I agree with you, actually. But I'm trying to also get an idea from you what you're. Kind of.
I see value in having our zoning ordinance, of course, if that's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Um. Of course I do. But we have to make some exceptions. I, we can make some exceptions.
We're allowed to, but.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh comes up with a couple of examples that, you know, you remember both of them.
I do, I do.
To make a distinction between those and this one is what I would call difficult.
I agree.
Yeah, just to, um, mention that that property directly north is currently zoned PUD.
Great, thank you. Nobody's going to make a motion to postpone, no, it's going to be, I'm going to, I'm going to rule that out of order. So, if you. So if you.
There's there's not gonna be any new information. Let's let's. And and I'm with Patrick, I'm sympathetic, I think. I understand the property, I understand what you wanna do. I'm I'm looking for a reason to say yes.
The trees aren't enough of a reason?
If I take into account what Doug's perspective, but if we look at the house and say, alright, the house has no garage. A garage is a property, right? And the trees get in the way of the garage, then I can't. But that gets back into reusing the fact that the applicant really didn't have to tell us that he had converted. If the applicant had converted, put the siding up and came came in to us and said, I want a garage. I'm on a multi-acre property, I need a place for my cars, I need a place for my lawn equipment, I need this. Then I think the trees become part of the discussion and the answer is for the aesthetics of the property. And everything else and the fact that it's non-buildable. And you don't want to extend this way into the back of the front of the house closer towards Zeeb is is completely off the table. Again, we're not supposed to provide solutions anyway. I guess the belief is, if the applicant had come to us after the renovation and said, I need a. I need a place, I garage, we would say, yes, it's a substantial property, right? And we'd probably say yes. If Miss Lawan is correct and we have to take that approach. Then we're not talking about an outbuilding, we're talking about a garage.
My only pro- my only problem with using that analysis is that. We 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 would know obviously that there was a garage there, there ain't a garage anymore and and we know that. So it's a little bit, with all due respect, and 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 Mr. Lamont, I I I have a lot of respect for him. I think that's going over.
And I'm I'm, we're chewing, so I'm throwing things out there.
Okay.
I'm not saying we're gonna slow them because.
That one I'd have a little trouble.
But I'm but I'm trying to throw everything out there so we get to a decision at least we're comfortable with. And I think we're still struggling with one that we're comfortable with.
The kind of style I'm comfortable because of the emotional content. It was a wonderful thing to do for your in-law. Uh your appreciation of the aesthetics, all of that. Fighting this up, I can't get past. Maybe I'm just simple minded. That's what I'm struggling over is the emotional side. For me intellectually, it's pretty clear.
Maybe the answer is, are we are we still chewing or are we basically making a decision and we just don't wanna actually come out and recognize it?
I'm just waiting for someone to bring a motion. I'm not saying which one, which way I vote to. I understand there, I I think I understand the whole thing. And 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 yeah. I think there's a big. I I I think we ought to talk about this for just a moment. The fact that no one has come here to complain, um to to my way of thinking. In 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 many regards. Doesn't mean much to me because I think people expect. That we will do our jobs, which is to essentially enforce the setbacks. Unless there's a good reason for it. So the the fact that, and they don't, in many cases. Somebody who lives next door to a proposed property needs a variance. Doesn't wanna create a conflict with their next door neighbor, so they're not gonna come here, but they're. They may be sitting at home saying, I you know, I hope they do the right thing because this isn't right. Now, do we force these people to come? To me, to complain if there's a problem? Or do we or do we say, and I and I think I said this at the last meeting, we're kind of the people who are. The protectors of the setbacks. So when people don't come. To me, I I keep in mind the possibility that they expect us to do the right thing. And to make sure that the setback's gonna be there except for a doggone good reason now. That said. In this case. With the Polo Fields and the PUD. I I guess I do have to. Smidgen a little bit and say, you know. This is really not gonna be a big deal for the Polo Fields. Now, fact that all the the Polo Fields Homeowners Association hasn't sent their. President or whoever here to say, no, we don't want this. And if they did. What credence do we give? I don't know. But, or not credence, but how much weight do we give? I don't know. Does that make it a little bit closer?
I was just gonna say, we're talking to a large organization, getting them to agree on something within three attempts. The applicant's pick here is probably asking too much. I'm not sure how many.
They've only got one notification.
Right, but for the. Maybe the board can make the decision without canvassing people, who knows, but getting a quick decision from a large organization can be a challenge. But I guess to your point. I'm okay hearing the perspective, pros and cons for variances that come before us. But that doesn't come to criteria that we use to evaluate.
I'm ready to.
Which one?
Got two.
Yeah, that's what I.
To deny.
Okay, well, go ahead with your motion.
We need to close business and then. Um so we we just rolled into the business and.
We rolled into it because this is old business.
Right.
So.
I'm just looking at my form here.
Yeah, this requires closing of the public hearing. I don't think.
To close old business.
Yeah, there was, I don't think, I'm sorry.
There was a, there's a motion made to close old business time.
Okay.
So this is, I believe, old business.
You mean a motion to close the old?
Motion was made to close the old business and then we.
Close the old business.
Which is.
Discussion?
Yes, that's how I take it. We've got a former secretary.
Yeah, I've got my copy of this. I'll take a very, I'll take a very simple. Having a motion supporting it and voting on it, if it's not required, it's no harm. If it is required, we don't do it. Someone might point it out, so for the sake of argument, I move to close the discussion on old business.
Okay, there's a motion made to close the the discussion on the old business on the agenda. Is there a second?
Yes.
Alright, motion by Mister Walsh, seconded by Mister Shields, uh to close the the old business. Uh call the roll.
Off.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shields, yes. No.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes. Alright, before we get to the vote on the.
We haven't even heard the motion.
Right, but I'm before we even get to that, I guess I'll make one comment on something that I've learned from the planning commission. To avoid the appearance of the chair affecting the vote, the chair should be the last vote heard. So.
I never thought of that.
That's part of the the bylaws of the planning commission. I'm just saying, maybe it's something.
We don't care of it. It's not, I don't, you know, it really.
It's a minor thing.
Yeah, it really is.
It's not really, like, at Board of Trustees meetings, we do rotate the voting order. And it is recommended that we do so. Maybe the MTA? I don't know.
I've never seen it, I don't.
I randomly do it to the planning commission, I just.
That's just feels you should feel.
You can do it as.
Please do it whatever way you wanna do it.
In the matter of variance number two, four, zero, zero, four, to allow for accessory structure with a side yard setback thirteen feet. Rather than a required thirty feet, requested variance should not be granted due to the following findings of fact. The parcel is two point nine seven acres. The home was built at an angle which causes it to be close to neighboring property. The property to the north is adjacent to the Polo Fields entry driveway. It is zoned PUD, so it is unlikely it will be developed. The parcel has several large mature trees, a very wet area, and two thousand gallon septic tanks. The owners repurpose the existing garage to create a living space for an older relative, including bedroom, bath, and bathroom. The building will be connected to the house. They want to build a twenty by twenty-two foot or four hundred and forty square feet garage. In the north side yard. The proposed garage structure must be placed where the driveway ends. The proposed garage will hold two cars and have room to store a zero-turn tractor, lawn tools, bikes, etc. The garage would not be visible from the Zee Road and will now have no effect on the neighboring properties. In order to build the proposed garage, a thirteen-foot setback is necessary. The parcel has several large mature trees, a very wet area, sorry, that's redundant, but. A thousand, two thousand dollar, thousand gallon septic tanks. Which limits the options for situating the garage. The owner stated that building the garage in front yard is not aesthetically pleasing. And is unacceptable. He also stated that cutting down mature trees aesthetically unacceptable. Number one, there are not exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to other properties. Classes of use in the district. There are not exceptional circumstances that don't apply generally to properties or classes in the area. While the house is built at an unusual angle vis a vis the boundary with the Polo Fields. The two point nine seven acres locations are available, which allow other options for building an accessory building. Number two, the variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by the property in the same zone. The applicant has not provided evidence of a loss of preservation of enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by the garage. In the same vicinity and zone. The situation was created by repurposing the current garage into an attached apartment. Number three, grant that that the granting of such a variance or modification. Will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially. Injurious to the property or improvements in such sonar districts in which the property is located. Number four, that the granting of such a variance will not adversely, will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of the township. Number five, absent exceptional circumstances, which would otherwise result in a substantial injustice. The circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based result from the actions of the applicant or his predecessors entitled. The variance request is due to the applicant's decision to repurpose the current garage to an attached apartment. And their desire to build a four hundred and forty square foot garage, therefore is a self-inflicted hardship.
Okay, motion made by Mister Shields to deny the requested variance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Cangis. Discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll.
So this is to deny? Off, or you wanna wait?
Mix it up.
Okay, Walsh.
Yes.
Shields, yes. No.
No.
Cangis?
Yes.
No. But uh. The motion. By a three to two vote is to deny. And ask Mister Shields to give this written notice of the decision.
Thanks. Thank you.
Uh there's a copy for you and an extra copy. Cause we'll give them to the town. I'll keep one for my reference here. Alright, next item on the agenda. Is the approval of minutes. I do have certain. Corrections to the minutes. Um in several places, these are the minutes of June twentieth of twenty twenty-four. The in several places, Mister Zafar's name is incorrectly spelled. Instead of Z A F A R, it's J A F A R on page two. Page. Four and four different places that I saw.
Yeah.
On page five and three different places, on page six and one page, one instance that I saw. Uh but they should be corrected in case we missed any of them. Any other corrections or changes to minutes?
Page two, the last bullet item, Polo Fields, the P and the F are not capitalized.
Page two?
Three quarters of the way down the page.
Uh and say that again?
Uh the P and the F in Polo Fields are not capitalized.
Okay, uh.
It's about six lines up from the break for clarifying discussion.
Okay.
The word PUD is early in the in the line.
Oh, yeah.
Directly to north is own PUD.
Oh, yeah, Polo Fields, yeah, Polo Fields is actually the development, so it should be capitalized. Anything else?
Nope, sorry.
Make sure any other prep, anybody, anybody, go on one place, a solicited motion?
Someone.
Moved by Mister Walsh to approve the minutes as amended on this record. Supported by Mister Cangis, call the roll.
No.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
Shields, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Planning Commission.
Oh, the planning commission uh report. So, planning commission, what do you got to say?
We've got a very busy month of June. Right, my recommendation would be if you want the specifics on all the items to go in. Items of note. Items of note were talked about the crossroads development at the corner of Wagner and Liberty. We conditionally approved it. We kicked it to the board over concerns still on air quality. The tests that the board requested were done and were deemed inconclusive. They didn't test the right things. I don't know.
Would you help, help me out here for just a moment? Which property we talking? We talking about that Lib Wag development on the south west corner?
Yeah, we heard it about two years ago.
We, we did it as an office complex, since which to a residential. Uh, they came to the planning commission with the final site plan review. One of the outstanding items, again, I'm trying to remember was, and the one that was contentious was the air quality from Cadillac asphalt plant.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah, the testing, I think it was inconclusive regarding particulate matter and something else. I saw the report. I don't remember all the details.
Oh, the V O Cs weren't measured as well as, if I remember correctly. All organic. All organic.
So they want to, so what, what's the intent of this new?
Well, because originally when the P U D was approved, the space was going to be used for offices. And now the developer wants to use it for apartments. So now it's residential. And if people are spending long periods of time in that location, there, there are questions about what's coming out of the pipes to chimney, the asphalt.
The sticks, yeah.
Now, apparently Eagle does do some regular testing at the asphalt company. And we're getting more information on that. I don't know how regular it is, or is it only triggered by complaints from residents? I don't know. And I only know all of this because I sit on this development review team meeting once a month. A lot of this has not come to the board recently.
That was one of the big ones. I guess the other one.
So what happened to our approval of the zoning proposal? I mean, is that the whole true no matter what?
Yes. Because we gave it for the property. We did a conditional, put a conditional to the development of the business. That's my understanding.
Are you saying you would have concerns given the changed use?
Maybe, I don't know. I mean, it, it, it changes everything. I, I would say.
But if we look back at it, if I recall, we, we gave the variance relief based on the water retention and distribution system, which is still largely intact, what they were doing with the commercial for the residential. I mean, there's, there was a lot of consideration given on handling water runoff, like, given all the impervious surfaces. But anyway, my understanding is, from the discussion is, yes, the variants are there and they were given. The other one that came back both times in June was the proposed daycare center at the two, four, two church. Uh, they, they want to expand their provided services to include a five day a week daycare.
Where's?
They're on Wagner, pretty much where Gelman was. Their, their ground zero.
Oh, 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 sure, 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 sure.
Diaxine contamination.
No, I, I, now I know what you're talking about.
The, the concern on that is there was surface samples taken at the time, it was twenty sixteen. That didn't show, given the testing capabilities at the time, any contamination related to the little Gelman situation. The question though is, uh, before we put a daycare out there and there's a, you have a state mandated requirement for an outdoor facility where it gets to play, is it really safe? And the pushback, um, to two, four, two was this is one we have to be certain on.
So we consulted with our technical consultant on Gelman, Keith Gadway.
Yeah.
From Quantum Environmental. And he made a recommendation to do additional soil boring tests. He doesn't think there's going to be a problem, but.
And, and that the discussion was, everything says it's probably okay.
Yeah.
But in this case, we need to be certain.
Yeah. So Gelman did groundwater injection of large amounts of dioxane into aquifers. And they also did surface spraying of dioxane all over the property there for a long period of time. So a lot of it soaked into the ground that way.
Yeah, I think Keith's, no, there's nothing in the dioxane in the ground that says the dioxane is going to bind to it. Gravity is going, and all the rain over thirty years, because it's happened thirty plus years ago, is likely to have washed it all down to the point of, if you're disturbing the soil to put a playground set in or something else, you're probably okay. The planning commission just don't think probably was good enough. Okay, so those were the two biggies. We had some conditional uses. There was an outlot on Menards to the east. Um, they were looking to conditionally put in, um, housing, identity housing, townhouses, I guess, so they're packed. That was an acceptable conditional use for the lot. Uh, we had a rezoning proposal that the board recommend, or the planning commission would recommend to the board saying from Marshall Road that we change it from office space to was it A one or something else?
Was that the home occupation?
That was converting the office building into a home, yes. We, we passed the recommendation on the board and said yes to that. The heritage collision purchase of the building behind Kiwanis as a non-customer use building with bays to do major collision work. We passed on our recommendation to, to the board to approve that. Another building on Jackson Road closer to Baker. I believe the Chevy dealer on Dexter and our road was looking to expand for a, again, non-customer facing uh, extra facility for, for work, particularly E Vs. We said yes to that conditional. Recommended that the board say yes. I think those are the major ones. I may have forgotten, but I, if you're really interested, I would recommend to put the, look through the minutes because both of them are. We had no meeting at the beginning of July. We've got one on Monday, but it's largely informational. Now, part of the information is the upcoming sustainability workshop in early October. That's going to be done in the Meyer parking lot. It's not going to be done as it's been in the last two years with the fire department.
Say that again?
The environmental sustainability show, for lack of better.
Open house.
Open house. Rather than being done around the Halloween timeframe in conjunction with the fire department is now going to be done. I believe it's October sixth, but I could be wrong. It's that timeframe. And it'll be done in, uh, the Meyer parking lot. They're going to designate space for it.
Have you been doing anything else?
Well, thanks for the bylaw changes and a few other things.
Do you want those?
Okay, um, thank you for that report. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. Citizens wishing to address the zoning board appeals on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. Each speak, speaker shall identify him herself by name. And such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization should have five minutes to address the board, provided that if more than five citizens express a desire to speak, the chairperson in answer of her discretion may limit the time and comment. Are there any citizens wishing to speak? There's one in the audience. Is there any, any others?
Yes.
Pam Boyd, okay. Bob?
Okay.
You were here first, I guess?
I'm here first. Um, I'm Judy Monk and a resident of Sio Township. Um, first off, very impressed with, uh, the thoroughness and the deliberations. Um, I read the minutes from the last two meetings and saw that this was the third time in, so, um, it was very thorough and, and deliberate. Um, so it seemed like you really know the aspects of the zoning. Um, I am running as a trustee um, for Sio. And the election, of course, is coming up August sixth. I've been attending the commission meetings and the committee meetings for the last couple of months. Um, so that I can, um, be up to speed on the things that are going on in Sio. And so if elected, I can be seamless in moving into, um, the position, hopefully. And, um, and support all the volunteers that are on the commissions and committees. Um, and the other thing I will do is a public service announcement is, one, the election, and two, a great site that I would recommend is to go to vote four, one, one dot org. It's actually League of Women Voters site. You can go to all the candidate sites. You absolutely can if you want to. Um, but a great site to go to where you see all of the information from all the candidates for all the positions is on vote four, one, one dot org. It's one, I like the site because it's no gloss, no glitz, and you get it in the words of the candidates, so you're not getting it screened through, um, through other means. You get to really hear, and they ask questions and you just answer the questions, so you really are getting apples to apples type of information. So I encourage everyone to be able to look at those, uh, at that site. It's four, one, one, vote. No, what I, vote four, one, one dot org. And it's supported by the League of Women Voters. So appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Boyd?
Thank you, Pam Boyd. Um, this question actually might be best directed to Doug. Um, Doug, help me with my education. So what would, um, prevent somebody, as an example, the, 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 the people that came before the board, this committee today, um, to put up a, um, a structure that would act as a garage that is not attached. So it's not permanently affixed to the garage, but it doesn't look nearly as, um, beauti- be- beautiful as a garage. Could they do that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm really surprised that nobody took that into consideration. Because I would have much rather have seen a variance with a, a, a garage where you guys set some standards. Then my guess is, is that this family is going to have to put up a temporary structure um, that, um, won't be as pretty. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other persons who wish to make any public comment? If, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. There's no one else here in the audience. So we'll close the public comment. Uh, next item on the, uh, on the agenda is adjournment. I would solicit a motion. Motion by Ms. Noel, seconded by Mr. Walsh to adjourn, call the roll.
Cangis?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shields? Yes. Walsh?
Yes. Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.